May we have the microphones on, please? Thank you. I'd like to call the city council back to order. We look like we've lost some people. It's lunchtime. Do we have consensus then that we will move forward with this project and council and staff will take responsibility?
And in what way are we -- what is -- what does that mean?
Well, what I was -- again, what I was hearing is that we should, as a council, make the decision that we're going to move forward with exploring the options. And I like Nancy's suggestion of looking at the global issues that we have with regards to access outside of PGI.
I just think without having -- knowing how this is going to be funded, how do we move forward? That's a key component for me.
I think we need to know the viability option, and then we can come back to the funding portion of it.
And then we can do the poll, or?
Then we could do a poll at that point, yeah.
So you're saying get a better idea of what the true numbers?
Yeah, yeah. And a possibility, is it really -- is it doable, is it possible?
So would the city be -- I'm just, you know, we can do in kind, but we can only do so much. I mean, there's -- the group paid, I'm not sure how much for what they -- the work that they had done. I'm just worried about the financial impact to the city. I mean, I want to go in this with my eyes wide open. Are we -- would we be hiring? Would, you know, how would we get that information?
If city council wants city staff to take the project over, isn't that what we're talking about?
Yes.
We would be presenting to you a game plan of how to tackle this, and if it's more of a global perspective, that's fine. But as city staff, we would do as much legwork and background work as we can. Some of the city staff here has been at this project for a number of years, so we have some background. Included in this, you need -- everybody needs to understand, we will be issuing eventually, at some point in time, a proposal process for engineering firms to help us, help us, the city, with all of the engineering and permitting review that's going to take place. There is a very large number of agencies that are going to be involved in helping us review these various options that we may come up with. The Hans Wilson report talked about a number of about $100,000. That may or may not be the proposal cost. We don't know. We haven't gone out for it yet. So if you're thinking about what are some of the dollars involved that you may be faced with to try and get the answer, to try and get the answer, is this project permissible? And if so, where? We're talking in the -- well, we could be talking 100,000 or more, depending on what comes back. Staff time, no, you don't -- our time is our time.
Yes, Rachel.
Is there any intermediate between those two? Between spending the 100,000 and zero? Is there any other preliminary? I mean, I just, I don't feel comfortable with the 100,000 if we don't -- haven't decided how the funding is going to be worked out.
The -- there is an intermediate step, but it's never gotten beyond it. We have taken the intermediate steps in the past, and that is staff has gone ahead, working with various groups. At one time, it was the waterfront advisory committee, putting together a presentation. We came up with estimated cost after initial discussions with the Department of Environmental Protection, and we didn't get anywhere.
So could we refresh that? Refresh what they did? Have an additional conversation with DEP to see if what that report stated is still viable, to have some comparison?
I mean, I'm sure we can.
Nancy?
You know, years ago, I was asked where I thought this project really belonged. And when I look at this, if you look at it just from a PGI perspective, this is the issue that has been brought forward by the citizens, it's really a PGI canal problem. We in Burnt Star Isles didn't bring forward a problem. We're okay, you know, we know that we have what we have. And we are actually working with the Alligator Creek Waterway Committee, and we are actually very close to getting Alligator Creek dredged to six feet. And we're working -- our canal advisory committee is working with the city staff on and getting whatever information we need, because we're looking at trying to redredge our perimeter canal, and that's taking a lot of investigation. And any costs for that is coming out of our canal maintenance funds. And so to me, if there's a need for some dollars, it may be prudent to take a look at the Pontegora Isles Canal Advisory Committee funds to do that. I realize, Rachel, that it -- this is something that only the southern half will truly benefit from, but that may be a source of funding.
That might be a source, as well as maybe some grant from MAC or from, what was it, WCIND? There might be some other possibilities. I think -- yes, sir.
I just have a question. I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to this. Has Hans met with DEP and Corps of Engineers, and they've given a conceptual approval of the concept?
Could we have that on our record, please? Yes, could you come up to the -- do you mind coming up to the microphone? Want to repeat the question, Dave?
For the record, my name is Hans Wilson. To repeat the question was, have I met with the regulatory agencies to discuss the concept plan that we presented to city council? And the answer to that is yes. Part of that was discovery to determine what kind of mitigation requirements would be a part of permit application. Obviously, this project has to go through state and federal permitting. That includes our investigation into things like viability of the barge canal, and also talked about the Corps of Engineers permitting alternatives analysis, et cetera. So yes, we have met, they have looked at that, and they are aware of the proposal that we have put forth.
If I might?
Please.
All right. So in your meetings with them, did they give you any indication that they would be favorably disposed of the project? Or did they give you their typical answer, well, give us an application and we'll give you an answer?
Part B.
Part B?
Yeah.
Yeah, give us -- they won't -- they're very supportive of every project you bring before them. They want to be helpful. They'll give you as much information as they can, but they won't make a decision that comes through in the form of a permit.
There is sort of an intermediate step. I mean, I -- this is what I do for a living, and Hans is right. I mean, generally, they don't give you much feedback. But sometimes you'll get a, you know, hell no. And I'm not sure whether we got that or not, but -- and maybe, you know, I should talk to Hans and get a better feel for what's gone on so far. But typically, that's where you start doing your due diligences by talking to the agencies and giving them what you have, and trying to get the best read from them as to whether or not, even with mitigation and even with all kinds of other stuff, based on their prior experience, based on their knowledge of the area, whether it's a potentially feasible project, or you're wasting your time. And I don't know if we got that yet.
Did you want me to comment?
Do you -- do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, in my meeting with the DEP, when we proposed the project, the sense I got was this was a project that had some merit. Otherwise, it wouldn't have wasted Pontegora Boaters Alliance time. So I think there's a general recognition of the need for additional access simply from the stressors associated with developing this waterfront community, and I think the DEP is fairly realistic on recognizing that. And as long as the city comes in with an application that does the best it can to create that access and minimizes the environmental impacts as much as possible, I think you've got a project that will fly, certainly with the DEP. Now, there's some unknowns. I think Howard talked about the myriad of agencies that we have to go through, and the one agency that we can't get any feedback from is National Marine Fisheries Service on impacts of small to sawfish. However, I think if you take a look at what the mitigation that we had proposed, which was excavating filled areas and creating tidal areas, does in fact create additional habitat for small to sawfish in the way we've designed the channel, I think you've got a project that will pass muster with them. It will just take some time, because they're exceedingly slow in reviewing those projects.
We've been talking about this project for many, many, many years. If we don't find a way to take this particular opportunity to move this project forward to some extent, I think that we may be shelving it for years to come. With facing the growth that we are looking at in Pontegora and recognizing that we are a boating community, I think that we need to just move forward, at least with a basic permitting process, to see where we could wind up with it. If we let it go now, I just don't think it's a good idea.
Yes, Kim.
I think we all agree that it's a great project, and we'd like to see it happen. Why don't we ask Howard and staff to get a plan together of what that would look like, associated cost? I'm not really sure why we're painting over the funding when the group has already said they would fund it. So if, you know, obviously, a poll would have to be taken for that, for those residents to make sure that, I mean, we did have 850 people, and most of them stood up at the last meeting. So there's probably people who didn't show up. But I think it, you know, we can sit here and talk about it, but if we don't know exactly what we're talking about, or what kind of dollars we're talking about, if we're talking about going into permitting, I like Nancy's idea of looking at it globally. Is that the right spot? Is there another spot that would be more appropriate?
Well, and quite honestly, not to interrupt you, but
In the PGI, it really is the only area where there are options.
Right.
In the southern part, there really is no option. Alligator Creek is the only option. So it's really looking at what can we do to help alleviate that, and what really will best serve the community as a whole.
Carolyn? Yes, Rachel.
David, is there anything that could you possibly meet with DEP and get any, I mean, you've been working magic in our marina and other places that, you know, we've needed some assistance, would it be of any benefit for you to call a meeting with them, or to
What I'd like to do is maybe review what's already been done, and then see whether it's appropriate for me to do that now, or premature, you know, to do that without additional information. So as part of the staff's putting together of a game plan, I think I could kind of put that input into that discussion.
All right. Do we have consensus then that staff should put together a game plan to move forward?
Yes.
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 All right. We're getting some.
And so we are going to wait to hear from, back from our staff in terms of next steps. I want to thank Hans Wilson and the committee, again, that worked very hard on that study and funded it for us. Thank you. I assume that's the study that you're going to, again, begin looking at as part of your process?
Yes, and including some of the stuff that's already been done.
By staff?
Yes.
And I do, I guess I feel, again, very strongly that our staff have been very, very creative in finding other funding mechanisms. And I would like to put it back in their court and say, find us the money.
I guess I have a question. The game plan is going to take -- Howard, I have a question for you. The game plan is going to look at the overall issue?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're going to try and come up with step by step of how we get to some decision point.
Plan of action.
Anything else? Okay. Well, then we will move from this to our new business, which is the discussion regarding the use and approval of barber poles.
What a transition.
Howard told me he wanted something light to add to the agenda.
What a letdown.
We're still in session. Do you want to address this? Okay.
For the record. Yes, for the record, Terry Tubbs, unofficial. This came up as a, I'm sorry, as a result of one of the barber shops, I think Howard received a comment back on his Facebook page as, because in the city center--
Speak a little bit louder, or speak into the microphone.
Close, okay. Is that better?
Thank you.
Howard received a comment from a business owner who had requested a barber pole as part of his overall signage. And the way the sign code is written, we couldn't approve it. So Howard asked Ms. Chek with the Pontegora Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Downtown Merchants Association, to get their input. And both entities did support. They said they didn't have any issues with the allowing barber poles. And some of the draft comments, I did get some comments back. One was that it's not clear that the barber pole be affixed to the building, that it shouldn't be just set outside or ground mounted. And the style of the pole should be historical and designed, so that it is incorporated into the character of the district. And the last one is the distance, it's number six on the list. The distance from the ground to the lower edge of the barber pole shall be seven feet or greater when located over a pedestrian walkway. When you think about that, because the barber pole isn't going to extend out that far, that really isn't necessary. People are going to walk around it. They aren't going to hit their head on it or anything. So that could be removed.
What we're asking is, is council okay with us following through and putting this through the public hearing process? Because as a staff, we think that we have some old-fashioned barber shops, old-time barber shops, and a barber pole is associated with a barber shop, and we would like to, we feel it has merit.
Any comments, questions? Yes, Kim?
Rachel was first.
Okay. Definitely, I like the, some of those pictures you had were a little scary, like the LED one, because obviously, we don't allow any flashing lights. So, you know, that would kind of be contradictory if we allowed them to have that. And I like the idea of it being affixed to the building, the, you know, the historical, just as long as it wasn't, I mean, I don't even know if I want to be as specific to say not LED, but, you know, something traditional, I guess I would say.
Yeah.
That's it.
Tom?
The businesses are currently allowed to have a sign that extends out, what, could you describe that type of sign?
Yes. Businesses are currently to allow to what's called a projecting sign, which is a sign that has a bracket attached to the wall and allows the sign to project out from the face of the building.
And they could, if they wanted, superimpose a barber pole-type image on that particular sign, if they had a mind to do that? I mean, I just don't know.
Yes, they could.
A barber shop, only for barber shops?
Barber shop, yeah.
Okay.
I'm okay with it. Not these great big tower ones or the LED, but the old-fashioned barber pole, small one, not one that starts at the ground and goes all the way up the side of a building.
I'm in agreement with that. Yes?
One of the original concerns about the barber pole not being consistent with our existing code is the fact that it actually rotates. In the proposed language, I may have missed it, but do we allow for it to rotate, and is that necessary?
For a barber pole, I would think we would want to allow it to rotate, because that's just the way they traditionally do. We do talk about moving signs, which are not permitted. We may need to tweak that a little bit to make sure it be okay.
Are you having problems with that?
No.
I'm only having problems with the stand, I am. I mean, the real traditional barber pole didn't rotate. I know that there's a lot more recently that do. And my concern is that if we allow one sign to rotate, how do we say the other one can't? So I think we can do what, accept what they're trying to do, and have a sign that is historically recognized as a barber pole without having it to rotate.
I'm good with that.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Okay with that.
Okay.
I like doing something that helps extend the character of the community, so.
So we'll move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Can't have a meeting without a sign discussion.
Recommendations from our city officers. City manager, Howard?
Yes. We had a less-than-stellar discussion at the joint school board, county commission, city meeting yesterday. So here's where we are. City attorney has opined that No Petro is going to have to come in front of the city through the special exception process and apply for the ability to construct their station within the city, within the zoning area, and all the building permits and everything associated with it. We would like to send a letter to No Petro, formally alerting to them that they need to apply for the special exception, and in that way, we will have a public discussion.
If we do, if we immediately send it to No Petro, it does not give us an opportunity, perhaps, to talk with our counterparts on the school board, perhaps recommending that they consider another site for the station.
It's your call, but we do need to put them on notice that they do need to apply.
Yes, Kim.
I think the letter is fine. I did, was going to set up a meeting and go talk with Jerry Olivo and Ian Benson. I mean, no one called after the meeting to offer any information, so I think sending the letter is, I mean, we obviously have questions. There is a school board meeting next week. I thought I would go to that. I know we have a disc of ones, so I'm okay to send the letter.
That would be helpful. I guess I'm just thinking in terms of strategy. Do we send a letter first before we let them know that we really would recommend? Or do we recommend that they consider a different site?
I think, I think we do both. I think we send them a letter and continue to have some dialogue with them.
Rachel?
I would prefer that we request a formal public meeting with them. I mean, one-on-one, it's, in my opinion, it's past that point. I've heard that they've refused to meet with concerned residents and taxpayers. That concerns me. I mean, the people that I've heard from, they want a public outlet. If we go to closed door with them, it defeats part of that purpose. The other issue that I'm feeling from the meeting yesterday was that they knew we were going to bring it up. It almost feels like it was blocked from the agenda, and then they said they weren't prepared to discuss it. I feel very strongly now that we're in a slippery slope, because we've been a partner. I mean, our staff has met with their staff. We've been involved with the contractual process. Is that right, Howard?
No. All we're doing is following it along, because we plan to be a user, we think, depending on what we get back with our consultant.
But is our name on anything related to, see, to No Petro?
No, other than we plan to be a user, correct?
So we plan to be a user, and we've been supportive of their efforts up until this point. And now, they won't even talk to us about it? I mean, I don't know if I feel like the city should become a user at this point, if they're not even going to address concerns that, you know, I guess maybe we're ultra-transparent? Maybe that's why I'm feeling the way I am, that, you know, we go down to the minute detail of whether or not the barber shop poles should rotate or not. We talk about everything, and I'm a parent, so I'm a little bit more emotional on that side of it, because, you know, this is my kid. This is her school. This is the school that I went to, that my husband went to, that, you know, family history, all that, I have in my back pocket, too. But just the whole way that it's unfolding makes me feel very uncomfortable.
And according to the, what they had said yesterday was that they've been through the issues. They've discussed the issues infinitum, and that there is only a small group of people that have been coming. And I don't think that's the case.
Well, they're, sorry, they're, I've got to finish that from what you said. They're implying that we did not attend their school board meetings. They're not going to come to us. We have to go to them, and that's their stance right now. Again, I just don't feel comfortable with that. I mean, we had a joint meeting. Yes, there was a reason why we were there, but that doesn't mean we couldn't preclude us from discussing other issues that are relevant to zoning, land use. I mean, it all fell into the same realm, but it was obvious that, you know, it was not going to be discussed.
Kim, and then Nancy?
I agree. It was, they knew we were going to talk about it. Actually, a month ago, when the citizens started coming, I asked it to be put on the agenda, and they, you know, didn't put it on the agenda. Or even had the opportunity, I feel, to say, this isn't the appropriate place. How about we set up another meeting, or to reach out to us? I really didn't want to be confrontational. I just wanted to know, is that site been set in stone? Have they met? When do they plan on meeting with the city, you know, looking at the special exception and that type of thing? When I looked at their contract, they have a, they have to help No Petro market to the, I think of it as public, but the private sector. So now, we're going to have not just the 30 buses, because I'll tell you, I think the group, everyone I've talked to, if it were just going to service those 30 buses that are there right now, I don't think anybody would have a problem with it, even the group that is worried about it. They are not, no one is against CNG. They don't like the location. It's not a safe place for the kids for, with the school traffic that are going on there. That was my only question. Is there an alternate location if this one doesn't work out? How are you going to determine what the traffic flow is? How is that going to work? Where are they, you know, are we going to have 18-wheelers going down Carmelita Cooper, all that kind of stuff?
What was interesting in terms of a side comment that I received is that they did not want to discuss it in a public meeting.
That's a problem.
And that was what, because yesterday's meeting was a public meeting.
We are all representatives of the public. That is what we do.
Absolutely.
If you, again, based on what our city attorney has said, when they apply for a special exception, we will then be able to, through the planning commission and city council, have a public discussion and have all of our issues ironed out, hopefully. That's when we, when we can get all these.
Okay.
But that's, but we need to start the process, I guess. We need to put them on notice, correct?
I say send the letter. Well, certainly, I think they may be, they may be under the misunderstanding that, because it's on school board property, that they are exempt from our regulations.
They're leasing.
Well, I would argue that even the school board is not exempt from our zoning, but clearly, the No Petro would not be exempt from either our zoning or the building permit process.
Nancy?
And getting them to know that now, sooner than later, is probably helpful, and it doesn't preclude whatever other efforts that you might have with respect to the school board to try to get it somewhere else.
Nancy?
Yeah, I felt like this was about a year ago, we were getting rebuffed by another organization, so I said, oh, good, we're getting this again. What's to say they're even going to listen to this special exception? Can they, because they seem to say, think that they're exempt by state statute from having to do anything.
But No Petro is a private corporation.
They're a private corporation. They're leasing the land.
Oh, you're talking No Petro. Thank you.
Yeah, they're leasing the land for a dollar a month.
No Petro.
Okay, okay.
I think it's always good to let people know early on.
Yes.
We let, we let the school board and the county commission know early on we were bringing this topic up, a couple of weeks in advance. I think we should let No Petro know early on.
Yep.
Send the letter.
So that they can, and then we can continue discussing with the school board, but let's, we need to let them know early on.
First, Rachel, and then?
Our 11 trash-- Our 11 trash trucks are not gonna make or break this gas station. I mean, yes, we've all discussed the benefits, and we would like to move to that type of energy, alternative energy sources. Nobody's disputing that. But our 11 trash trucks, potential trash trucks in the future, are not gonna make or break this operation, so, I mean, I would even be willing to pull my support from the project just to get the attention and say, wait a minute, whoa, hold up, you know, this, this is a red flag in my mind, and so, that's where I'm at.
Tom?
At what point in time do we have to let them know the information that we're seeking from them?
You're suggesting, right?
I mean, the special exception?
No, no, what information that we want to garner from the, the school board?
Well, I'm, I would be anxious to learn whether or not they will consider other sites.
And, yeah, yes, and I would as well.
And so, that's where I'm at. I mean, I don't believe, I would really like them not to have it at that site. I mean, for all the other reasons that have been.
I'm with you.
That have been discussed, so.
Carolyn, could I make a suggestion? Could you, would this board be, have consensus for you to send the chairman of the school district a formal letter asking for a joint meeting at a public location, have a public notice meeting to discuss the issue and see what kind of response we get? I mean, it isn't our city limits. It's in our backyard, and, and the county, if they move it from where it is now, guess where it's gonna go? Somebody else's backyard. So, I mean, what's the problem with having the public meeting? That's the question I want the answer to.
I agree, and I think Howard should send the other letter to No Petro simultaneously.
All right, so we're, I think that what I'm hearing is we've both sent the letter to No Petro with regards to the.
Yes.
Special exception.
Need of the special exception, and then also a letter to the school board.
Requesting a public meeting.
A public meeting, and to, staff to coordinate a time to do that.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Just, bow of clarification, the letter to No Petro would advise them not only of the fact that they need a special exception, but they're gonna need to get a building permit, and, and maybe the way to do it is that they're gonna need to get the special exception before they can get the building permit.
Okay, sounds good. Are we good on that?
Yes. Two letters.
Two letters.
Yep.
Our city clerk?
Two letters and a game plan.
A detailed game plan. I thought that's what we were talking, well, you didn't talk about that. I apologize.
That's okay. We can hear from the city clerk first.
The city attorney, I apologize. You were talking before, I thought you were already done. I'm sorry.
He was trying to skip over you.
Fine, I, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for allowing me to continue as, as your representative.
That was under consent agenda.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Michael, can we have that, that graphic, please? I'm sorry, but.
Oh, gosh.
I was very fortunate, actually, to find this graphic because the, the situation that I wanna discuss with you is somewhat complicated. You may recall that this whole issue started.
Why don't you explain the issue first?
Yeah, this whole issue started.
Mayor, is there a hard copy of that that we can look at?
I didn't realize that the screen was gonna be behind us. If you'd like to pass this around, it might be helpful.
We get copies?
I don't know, do they, do they have a copy machine here?
Can you email it to us real quick? You have a copy of it? Yeah, email it to us.
Yeah, okay, that would work. You may recall that the county commission has advertised and is in the process of amending their comprehensive plan. The part that is of greatest concern to us is that portion of the comprehensive plan that takes out the, the prohibition against amending or renewing, renewing or extending existing mining permits without modifying or amending the comprehensive plan, future land use map, to allow the mineral resource extraction, future land use designation. And, in essence, what that means is that they can move forward, if the, if the amendment passes, it can move forward, the mines can, without going through any type of a public hearing process to determine whether or not that location is appropriate and suitable for mining, among other things, impacts to natural resources. And, so, I requested the opportunity to review the existing permits that mines that are within the Shell Creek watershed have, both from Charlotte County and from the Florida, Southwest Florida Water Management District, which is the agency that, that issues those permits, to determine whether or not we really do have an issue, or whether or not those permits were issued with a full consideration of impacts to Shell Creek, which is obviously our concern. The, what I have discovered is that the permits, when they do take into consideration impacts to natural resources, are pretty much limited to the impacts that the drawdown of water that they, that they are permitted to, to use, to assist them to make up water when the water's not available, only addresses the impacts that that drawdown would have on wetlands that are in the immediate vicinity of the project, and when they have to actually pump water back into the pit, whether or not those wetlands are flooded, or whether they're depleted of water. So, so basically, that's the focus of what the environmental evaluation is at its best. Some of the older permits really didn't even go that far. And so, what my primary concern in the theory that I was, I was working under was that there were impacts to Shell Creek by virtue of a depletion of water in the superficial aquifer that feeds Shell Creek that was going uninvestigated by both the county and the state. And, and to explain why that is significant, I have this graphic here that I'll describe verbally, and then maybe when we get the email, you'll, you'll be able to see what I'm talking about. In the natural condition, pre-mining situation, you have a certain amount of rainfall that comes down onto the site. You have a certain amount of evaporation that naturally occurs. You have a certain amount of seepage that goes into the ground, which then feeds the superficial aquifer, which feeds Shell Creek, and then you have a certain amount of, of runoff, which at the end of the day, may or may not contribute to Shell Creek. And that's the natural, that's the natural condition. Of all the permits that I have investigated, and there were at least, there's, I think, at least 12 mines with numerous permits, both from Swift Mud and from Charlotte County, those that contained a water balance analysis, and not all of them did, but those that contained a water balance analysis, did not talk about the pre-mining condition. It was always, what is the balance at the, at the end? And, so you don't have the opportunity to see what the impact of the mine is going to have on existing conditions that contribute to the flow of Shell Creek. And so, as I said, in the pre-development situation, you've got rain coming in, you've got evaporation going out, you've got runoff, you've got seepage into the aquifers. And each one of those should be properly identified to determine what the components are pre-construction, and, and, for the most part, that's totally missing. During the active operation of the mine, which is the, the middle slide, again, you have, you have rainfall, you have evaporation, you have seepage, and you have inputs from wells that are intended to make up the water. And in the example that I gave, the graphic, there is a, an identifiable and marked difference between, for example, the pre-development seepage of, of water into the superficial aquifer versus the amount of water that's seeping into the superficial aquifer during the active mining operation. And I will say, just for, for the record, this is a graphic that I got from a, a mine permit application from Lee County, Lake County, from 2001. It's not, it's not, the numbers are not going to be identical to the numbers that are involved in Shell Creek, but the concept in general is. And so, if, and so you have that pre-mining condition, you have the active mining operation, and when I go back and look at, and, and verbally describe what's shown on the graphic, the active mining condition, the, the evaporation has increased from the mine versus the precondition, pre-construction condition. Let me explain that. When they mine, what they do is they dig, they dig a, a pit, and that pit, because it's dug into the water table, fills up with water. Now, in order to mine, what they do typically is they pump the, as much water as they can out, but there's still going to be more of the superficial aquifer exposed during the mining operation. And so, in this graphic, the, the evaporation went from, in the pre-development condition, from 3,010 gallons per day per acre, to during the mining condition of 3,900 gallons per day. So, a significant increase in the amount of evaporation than what occurred naturally. Also, when you compare the pre-development mining condition to the mining condition, the amount of seepage from the natural ground into the superficial aquifer was decreased by more than 50%. That would be a loss of water that would otherwise perhaps go to Shell Creek, yes? Well, it's not Swift Mud. In order, in order to get a permit from Swift Mud, you need to submit to them sufficient technical information by experts, presumably, who are able to model, based on site-specific or regionally-specific information concerning evaporation rates, the transmissivity, the amount of water that can seep into the ground. And in order to get a permit, theoretically, what you're supposed to do is show the pre-mining conditions, the mining conditions, and the post-mining conditions, to be able to demonstrate by providing reasonable assurances to Swift Mud that the impact of your project is not going to have adverse impacts upon the resources of the state, which would include the superficial aquifer.
So, it's a model? It's not an actual test?
Correct, correct, correct. But it's a good question, 'cause the way, and, and that kind of leads me into the post-develop, the post-construction scenario. Because when you look at what, what was shown in, in my graphic, in the post-development scenario, you now have basically a large lake with a greater surface area that's available for evaporation than was available during the pre-construction scenario. You, so, so you have, again, more water being evaporated from the reclaimed lake than what was there before there was a lake. You have no water runoff, which is also true during the mining condition, and that's from a, you don't want the dirty water from the mine to be able to pollute the surface waters, but by the same token, that results in perhaps a starving of the surface waters that would otherwise have relied upon that runoff. In the pre-development scenario, they attribute 300 gallons per day per acre of runoff that would have gone and fed, in our case, Shell Creek. In, in, in both the development and post-development scenarios, zero gallons per acre would, would be coming from runoff to Shell Creek. And then finally, if you look at the amount of seepage in the post-development scenario, that's the water that's going into the aquifer, it's, it's reduced from 640 gallons per acre in the pre-development to only 50 gallons per acre in the post-development. So, what this is showing me is that these are impacts that are not being reviewed by Charlotte County, nor, by the way, the state of Florida, when they're issuing their mine, mining permits. What they do require, as I indicated, they're looking at impacts to wetlands, and, and that's not an insignificant environmental feature, and most mines probably don't have proximity to a, the watershed of a, of a creek that is serving a drinking water purposes. So, most of them wouldn't be required to present the kind of information that we need to have presented to be able to determine that impact. And so, what they, what most mines require, or what, what, excuse me, what, what most mines offer to do, and they're sort of required to do, is they'll put monitoring wells in the ground to determine what impact the drawdown is during their pumping in the immediate vicinity. But I'll try to give this analogy. Looking at what the drawdown is and how you can monitor the drawdown is like the difference between going to the beach and looking for evidence of erosion, which is a slow and imperceptible process, versus avulsion, which is the loss of sand following a storm event. Swift Mud, by putting, by requiring monitoring wells, is essentially looking at the impacts, the evulsive impacts, the sudden impacts. The somewhat imperceptible impacts that will occur by virtue of the starving of the superficial aquifer that feeds Shell Creek, of the water that's lost through evaporation, is not easily monitored. And so, there's really no way to assure, without having a pre-development modeling that sufficiently models the situation, and a post-mon, a post-development modeling that would show what the impacts are, and some way of, of mitigating those impacts so that Shell Creek wouldn't be starved of the water that ordinarily it would get, is the only way we're going to be able to assure protection of Shell Creek. That is not being done currently. We would not have any say in that process of, of issuing permits, or the extension of these older permits, where if the county amends its comprehensive plan as it's proposed. These older permits expire, and each permit has an expiration date for a purpose, and the purpose is that it's recognized that over time, regulations or conditions change. You don't wanna give somebody a permit today and 50 years from now have that same permit being continued with technology or impacts of things that we would not have allowed 50 years hence. So, to give them a, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Have they ever measured those?
Well, I can only speak with respect to what I saw as it relates to those mines that I reviewed in Shell Creek, and the answer was no.
Never.
That they, that they, I did not see any indication in the permit applications, the review of those permit applications, or any conditions to any of the permits that were issued, that took into consideration the impacts to the superficial aquifer and, and the potential impacts to Shell Creek. Now, my experience is limited with respect to this type of permitting to our immediate area, the Southwest Florida Water Management District. The example that I was able to find, where the, the applicant showed what the pre-development impacts were, and the post-development impacts, were not within our Water Management District jurisdiction. So, obviously, it appears that it's being required elsewhere, and, because the mine, because the applicant probably wouldn't submit something that would be detrimental to their chance of getting permit if they weren't forced to do that.
I'd like to know the answer to that.
Do you know whether or not the new permits that Swift Mud is giving would require this kind of thing?
The, the most recent one, and, and it's a fairly recent mine, I believe was issued in 2012. It's one of the Vermont Road Mines. It, it does not have a water balance that, that talks about pre-development, water loss through evaporation, and, and comparison with the post, post-development losses as a result. So, I mean, I wish there was a better way for us to get the county to require that. So, I mean, I wish there was a better way for us to get the county to require that and to, um, challenge the issuance of a county permit if it didn't require it. But at the moment, the only leverage that we have is to, is to prohibit or prevent the comprehensive plan being changed, which gives the existing mines a free ride to continue doing what they're doing without subjecting them to the evaluation of whether or not that mine is causing adverse impacts to the Shell Creek.
But you're saying that it doesn't require it even now?
It, uh, let me, let me, let me clarify. Both the state of Florida, SWIFTMUD, and conceptually, the county's permit application process, if I was applying for a new permit, does require a demonstration of impacts to the water resources, but they are ignoring the impacts to the superficial aquifer. Um, and, um, and, yeah.
Could you repeat that?
Yeah. Uh, the state of, the SWIFTMUD regulations, and, and, and to a, a similar extent, Charlotte County's new, um, ordinance, requires a demonstration that the project is not going to have adverse impacts to important water resources. And I'm paraphrasing. And yes, they will show what the impacts might be to, um, the wetland, the, the aquifer supporting the wetlands, and the state does that fairly, um, consistently. What the impacts might be in, on a temporary sense to the aquifer as a result of the pumping that takes place if, when necessary during the mining process. But it does not look at what the impacts would be, uh, during the mining or afterwards to Shell Creek, or the aquifer that feeds Shell Creek. And that's, that's, I mean, it's just an oversight, I think, in terms of, um, policy direction and, and, and past practice, and because there aren't that many situations that are similar to the Shell, Shell Creek situation where these mines are, are constructed.
And that's why we've asked that they maintain the half-mile buffer around Shell Creek.
Right, right. Now, in the, in the phosphate mining permits that I'm very experienced in, because phosphate mining occurs within water bodies, the regulations that, that govern the permits for those are very detailed in terms of having water balance and what the, what the impact of the mining during the mining is going to be to the water, uh, superficial aquifer and everything. But, but the sandmine permits are treated differently, and because they're not typically in with or affecting a water body, it's just, I, you know, they just don't ask for that information.
So what is your recommendation at this point in time?
Sorry.
So, um, to, one basic question, they're toward the end of this comp change, comp plan change, correct, or are they finished with it?
Yes, no, that is correct. We've, we've given, we've given them notice of our opposition to the change.
So I guess my question to Howard would be, how did we miss this?
No, no, we didn't.
We didn't miss it.
We are on, we are on the record, we, from the very start, I had, we advised the commission as well as the agencies that were going to be commenting on the commission, that, um, they have not been conducting the water balance analysis that's necessary to protect, um, our, um, superficial aquifer that's feed, feeding Shell Creek. And as a result, they shouldn't change the situation because we don't know what those, we don't know what impacts those existing mines have without subjecting them now to a, a process where they would have to amend the comprehensive plan, which would be public hearings, in order to get those, those permits extended. Right now, if the, if the comp plan doesn't change, I mean, if the change is the way they want it to change, um, those mines will basically have a free ride as it relates to potential impacts to the superficial aquifer.
But they've already sent those changes on.
They have.
They have.
They have.
So it does feel like to me, and I heard one of the commissioner's comments at their last meeting, like, where was City of Punta Gorda, like?
We were there, we, we asked them, um, to not do what they did. We asked the agencies to recommend that they not do what they were proposing to do. We had a favorable finding from the Regional Planning Council's staff that was never officially transmitted by the Regional Planning Commission to, uh, council, to, to, um, the, um, County Commission. I'm not sure that made, would have made a difference or not. Where we are now is at, um...
But does that get transmitted to the DEO or whoever takes the comp plan?
No, no, because it was not adopted by the Regional Planning Council. Um, I made, I made...
It was shot down?
I made, it, they never brought it up to a vote. They continued, they...
It did not go up, uh, for a vote. It went to, uh, Mary Ann Devonas, who's the, um, does the review, and she rendered an opinion that said that the City of Punta Gorda does not agree, and they've cited David's, uh, letter, and until such time that the city and the county can come to an agreement that, um, they don't really want it brought back. They don't, um, they want it, they want it to come back once we've agreed.
So the next, the only thing that, that we can do next, um, if, if ultimately, um, this plan is adopted, is to request an administrative challenge, administrative hearing, uh, which is a trial-type process of the, um, of the amendment, and demonstrate that, um, the amendment, um, is inconsistent with, um, protecting regional resources.
The, the county is still waiting to hear from us what our revised language might be. I don't know if they're going to accept it, so we still need to give them some revised language to see if they would even adopt it. The language they gave us, we reject it. Remember that?
Yeah, yeah.
So what, so we need to come up with some revised language, send it to them.
Well, I mean...
They're still waiting.
The, um, the only revised language that I can think of is, um, is, um, a refinement of what is already in the co, in the comprehensive plan that we want them to keep, because, you know, if we make recommendations with respect to their ordinance, in terms of what needs to be looked at, um, even if they adopt it now and let them, let the comprehensive plan amendment go forward, um, and we don't challenge the comprehensive plan, so, so their amendment becomes effective, next year, they can amend the, the mining ordinance to take out what we've asked that they put in, and then we've lost the opportunity to protect ourselves by the, by virtue of the comprehensive plan amendment. So, I mean, my recommendation would be that they keep the comprehensive plan language the way it is now. The only other change I would make is, is modify the comprehensive plan to make it absolutely clear that, that no permit would be renewed or extended without doing, um, a, a water balance analysis and demonstrating that there would not be any adverse impact to the Shell Creek watershed, and if they can't do that, then they don't get an extension. I can write that down if that's what, um, that's what would be acceptable, but that's, I mean, that's what we're really looking for, first and foremost.
I think that, uh, if, if it's agreed, that we ask you to, to draft that language and provide it to their staff or incorporation into their, um, comprehensive plan.
I will do that.
And then if that's not done, then...
And we send that to, uh, the county attorney, right?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for David? Learn more and more about aquifers and, what was that word you used?
Avulsion.
Avulsion, which I had not heard of, heard before. Okay, uh, we are now, I think, to our city clerks.
A few recommendations.
Karen.
Oh, sorry for the noise. Yep. Okay, I'll scoot up. All right, under Boards and Committees, we have a couple of continuing vacancies. Uh, first, we have the, um, we have two three-year terms as alternate members on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board. We also have a three-year term on the Utility Advisory Board, and one unexpired term on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board, that's for a regular member.
Have they been having issues with the board?
They have not. Surprisingly, we have not. I'm surprised we haven't gotten something for utility, that's usually a popular board, but we don't have anything. Um, under Appointments, we have two four-year terms on the Punta Gorda Housing Authority. Voting forms are being distributed. You're voting for two, please.
Voting for two?
Two.
And the appointees are Stephen Fabian and Melody Washington.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Under Policy and Legislation, uh, first of all, I attended as representative of council the NPO meeting, and I want to thank council member Nancy Pravky for providing information with regards to, uh, the left turn at Madrid in, in forty-one and the issues there. Uh, the documentation was well-presented, um, and, as she mentioned earlier, Secretary, District Secretary Haddaway has said that he will follow up with it. Uh, initially, we got kind of a form letter back and saying, well, you know, this is something that the city should do in terms of doing some street modification or traffic, uh...
Calming.
Calming measures, and we said, you know, that's just unacceptable. And I think he was kind of taken aback that we came back to him, but, uh, it was good. Uh, he also reported, uh, the District Secretary Haddaway, uh, reported on the complete streets policy. Uh, they will have a draft plan available in November. Um, it was, again, conducted with a grant from the Rockefeller Foundation, so that was happening. Also, May is, besides all the other, um, resolutions and proclamations we had, it's also Bicycle Safety Month and Motorcycle Safety Month, so we need to be safe all around our streets. Uh, already mentioned about the school board meeting yesterday, so I think that's taken care of, and I think that's all I have. Uh, Rachel, anything?
Sure. Um, yes, do you have the graphic, Mikail, that you can put up? I was approached by a citizen who says...
Want me to share a microphone?
Oh, sorry, that he is part of a committee.
The other one? Is that the...
Oh, that's the one that doesn't work? No, this works. Um, he says he represents a committee, and this, I just have very preliminary information, and it is in my district, but it's not over by where I live, so Tom and, Tom, you're probably by this, by this corner more often, daily, probably. Um, it's at the corner of Bell Harbor and Akia Stah, and there's a large white, he calls it a monopole, um, and from what he told me is that initially it had some flag attached to it. Well, the, the way the flag was attached, I guess it was noisy, and some residents complained, and so they took it down. But now he's, he's, this committee is wanting to get the flag back reinstalled. I don't know who pays for the flag, who maintains the flag, what size of flag, I just...
Are you talking about American flag?
Um, an American flag on this pole, and I did give Mikail some pictures. Personally, I didn't really even notice the pole until he told me to go look at it. It just, it's there. I mean, but like I said, that's not my neighborhood, even though that is my district, I didn't really notice the pole being there. So I think one of the considerations I would have is that you're definitely going to notice it if there is a giant flag attached to it, um, and it is in a residential neighborhood. So I guess the concern about the noise from the past and, you know, do we want this just to blend in, or do we want to see it all the time? I just am bringing it to you all, and if you all want to move it forward, it can go, and if not, then not.
Well, if it's an American flag, it needs to be lit if it's going to stay up.
I don't know what, what the city would, involvement would even be on, on the...
Is it on private...
Yes, Howard?
If this is the flag, which I think it is, on the cell tower...
Yep.
The city council years, uh, number of years ago said no. If, if, if you want to put a flag up there, it would have to go through the variance process, which we could initiate ourselves if you wanted to. It is a cell tower, and, um, but previous city council said no.
It's very tall. There are the photos.
Oh, yeah.
It's very tall.
Sure, Harvey?
Carolyn, Harvey has some background information on this. Would you mind if he...
Sure.
For the record, Harvey Goldberg, uh, I have some background knowledge on this matter, um, because I've been contacted by a small group of people led by a local doctor, I don't think they contacted you, Rachel, uh, about this, and I tried to clarify this matter for them, and this goes back, you know, years, and Howard is exactly right. Uh, to my knowledge, that monopole, which is behind Fire Station Number Three, okay, and it's a, it's a monopole, uh, cellular tower that AT&amp;T either owns or had built was the main contractor, and four or five cell companies have antennas inside the monopole, okay? Uh, and these people wanted to rec, uh, to put an American flag on that, on the pole, uh, very patriotic. Uh, I told them that, you know, historically, when it, and when it was constructed, that the city council did not sup, well, they had to get a variance because of the height of the pole, uh, was a hundred and, I think, thirty feet, and our, our, our code on it had a hundred and ten feet. And at the time, there was a discussion about making it into a, also attaching a flag to it, and it was not supported at that time. I advised them that if they wanted to pursue this again, uh, certainly they would have to get support from the company who maintains this pole or who owns it, and then file a petition for a variance through, uh, the, uh, through the various committees and into the city council. I wasn't supporting it or, or not, I was just saying, this is the process that you follow.
So is this on property, city property, then?
Y- yes, it's behind Fire Station Number Three.
Fire Station Three.
And so, that's all I know, right? I have not been contacted by these people again, but I did meet with them, about four or five of them, and, uh, this is the guidance I gave them. Uh, I think I'd spoken with Terry or, and even Howard about it as well, just as a heads-up that they may be coming back on this. So I'm kind of surprised that, I mean, I'm not involved any longer, I'm surprised that they contacted you to begin with, but that's all I know, and that's, so you, a little, maybe that provides a little clarity as to, you know, what, where it's come from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, the flag does have to be lit, and what about when it's lowered and raised, and who's going to be responsible for all of that? So, I, I mean, the company who owns the pole would definitely have to be on board and service the flag and replace the flag and light the flag and lower the flag.
Kim, to your point, this group said they would pay for the flag, they would maintain the flag, they would light the flag, they put the lighting on, they would do it all.
Okay.
Um, but I said, first, you've got to go back to the company that owns the pole, and then the company who maintains the pole, uh, and then get those permissions or understandings and agreements, and then start the process of going through the city council.
Well, you gave them good advice. Thank you.
Or vice versa.
Well, if, if we, I mean, no... Well, if, if we, I mean, now is the time to say whether we should encourage them or discourage them, because eventually it would come to us anyway, so...
All right, Steve Fabian, I was on the council when that was approved, and there was a lot of concern about the ugliness of that, and it, and the developer, the manufacturer agreed that there would be no, nothing stuck on the outside of that, that it would be very simple, and it would stay that way, and that was the decision at that time made by the city council.
With regards to the cell tower?
Yes.
Okay, yes, Nancy?
I'm all for being patriotic. I love all the things that we do around here because of it, but when I drive down Aquia Stah, which is not all the time, but I really don't notice the pole, and it seems like that was the objective, was to make this just kind of disappear into the horizon so that it doesn't stand out. I know with my own flagpole, how much noise that makes, and our, you know, the neighbors up and down the canal with the flags that whip, and, and even to be seen, it has to be large, and it's going to be, it's going to recreate the problems that some people complained about, so I would say that we should not...
I happen to have a sailboat docked next to me, and the fellow doesn't know how to secure his rigging, so it doesn't make a lot of noise when the wind picks up a little bit, but I can't imagine the noise that would accompany, what is it, 130-some-odd-foot halliards up there, I think that would be a problem.
Is there any consensus to move forward? You've heard no consensus.
I will let them know.
Thank you. Tom?
Sure. I attended the, and Rachel joined for a while as well, the General Employees Pension Fund meeting last week, as well as, I spent a little time at the, at the police pension board, and I'd like to report to you that the pension, the General Employees Pension Fund decided to hire Foster and Foster to administer their fund going forward. In the past, it had been done by, by staff, I think one office did one part of it, another office did another part of it, and I think that they've done a very wise thing in getting it all under one, one group, Foster and Foster has done a very good job, so I was pleased that they, that they did that. They, they also switched a substantial portion of their fixed income assets from ICC, who had been a very poor performer in, in years gone by, over to a new company called Garcia, and I forget the last name of the company, but it's a fixed, fixed income that has typically generated between six and seven percent a year, and it's significant in that it's, with the pension, with the General Employees Pension Fund, because that we know we're going to be closing that fund, and they are going to, over time, be shifting their investments from equities to fixed income, so it's important, and I am very happy that they did make that change. We, in the past, have entertained having representative from the pension manager come and give us a report on a yearly basis. We talked about it, we, we didn't proceed with it. I think it would be very appropriate if, at least on a yearly basis, we had a representative from Bogdan come and just give us an overview of the various pension plans, how they're stacking up next to our peers in the area, the unfunding, the ratio, unfunded ratios, just generally, how, how they've been doing over the years, so I think that we, if you, I think that's something we ought to implement, and get Bogdan on board with it, and report to us on a yearly basis.
Is there agreement? Absolutely.
I think we do a little bit of...
Bogdan, Bogdan can report on performance, it would be Foster and Foster that would report on comparisons of unfunded liability compared to their other plans.
Well, yeah, but Bogdan could, Foster and Foster works for Bogdan, am I correct?
No.
Then we should have each of them.
Right. Okay, we can apply them.
Yes, Rachel.
Along that line, I mean, there was conversations years ago to add the finance director and the human resource officer, human resources director to that board. I mean, I don't think it's such a bad idea. I know it caused a little bit of controversy in the past, but, I mean, it's two more people that could help oversee...
We, if I could, we have, over the past several years, introduced some really pretty sharp volunteers onto the pension boards, and from what I see, they have, they have, they've changed their asset investing strategy, every one of them has, over the past three years, changed their, their investment strategies, and they've been doing quite well. I wouldn't, it doesn't seem to be broken, and I wouldn't fix it.
Okay.
Is there anything else? Okay, Kim?
Nothing, thank you.
Nancy?
No, I, you covered it, I was going to mention the NPO meeting and where we were going with that, I just, I want to thank everybody for the, the really good discussion today. Thank you.
You wanted to...
Yes, I've been scribbling some language that I would like to include in a letter to the county, expressing in that letter that this is the language that the city council has asked me to provide to them, and I want to read it to you, so that if you have a problem with it, you let me know, rather than hear it the other way.
Yeah.
And, so, let me see if I can read this. So, we would recommend, through the commission, that no new permits or extensions or renewals of existing permits within a half mile of Shell Creek shall be renewed, issued, or extended without the applicant or peremptee providing reasonable assurance that the proposed permit, permit renewal or extension will not, here's the key part, will not reduce the flow of groundwater and surface water to Shell Creek below pre-development conditions, and any such applicant, and, and, and any such application be provided to the city of Punta Gorda with an opportunity to provide comments with respect thereto.
I like it.
What would be reasonable? Do you have to define reasonable?
You know, reasonable assurances is a phrase of art that the state uses for all of its permits. I think there's like case law that sort of defines what that is, so it's not, it's not a guarantee, but, but they have to provide evidence to show, and that's going to require them, particularly with respect to existing mines, to, by approved scientific means, determine what the conditions may have been prior to development.
I think that would be very difficult.
Well, no, I think that...
They can do that prior to development?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, well, thank you. I think we'll move forward then with that.
Just one, one more thing, is there any interest on our behalf to think about pursuing this on the legislative part of it, since there apparently is no criteria for, for installing mines in a, in a watershed?
Oh, I was supposed to...
Is that something we should pursue with the legislature, state legislators?
I thought we had asked that the next round, next session, that we ask our lobbyists to...
What we were going to do is have some sort of legislative-recognized prohibition of, of mines, new permits or renewals, within the Shell Creek watershed.
And that we would have some kind of monitoring opportunity, I thought.
Well, I mean, if it's, yeah, I mean, that goes, yes.
Go with it, okay. Yes, Nancy?
Just when Tom mentioned legislative, it just brought to my attention, something I saw where the legisla, the next year, that the legislation, it's going to be in January, so they're going to, the pre-agenda, the session we had in January, was it, or was it December, it's going to be in August, so we will need to start working on our legislative agenda, so we need to get, Mr. Paul...
The next session, when do they go back into session, they go back in June now? They have to be, they have to be finished by June.
There's a cooling-off period for 30 days, I think it has to be finished by the end of June.
End of June or June 1? Anyone remember?
Can't recall.
They have to have a budget adopted by the end of June.
End of June, okay.
But they have to have a 30-day waiting period before, so they got to get it done.
Okay, well, I think we're, we are done unless we want to do anything else, we're going to have to take a break for our video graphics.
Okay, because along that line, I wanted to bring up the Florida Lea Cities Policy Committee that I was on.
Okay, how much time do we have?
Two minutes.
Yeah, we need to take a break for, for public comment as well.
Yeah, so we can take the break.
It just takes one second minute to change it.
One minute? Okay, we can just...
We're ready.
Are you ready?
Okay, we're ready to go, go back again. Okay, Rachel, you're on.
Okay, Karen just informed me that she's going to put it on the next agenda, but I'm willing to serve on the Energy and Natural Resources Policy Committee if you so choose to have me do so. I enjoyed it, I thought they heard our issue, and it's kind of neat to be involved in other people's issues too, so you can talk about it at the next meeting, when...
Do we need to talk about it at the next meeting, or are we okay?
I say, I say, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, because it is earlier, it's the summer, so I have to start making my arrangements now, but so far, I have the dates on the calendar, and they all work out for me, so.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Anything else? I think you all read about my session with mayors going global, with the mayors down in Fort Myers, which was a very interesting interaction. We also had a very interesting session on our ethics workshop, that all appointed officials must attend four hours. You can't do three hours and 49 minutes. It has to be four hours of training on ethics, so we did that, and we got to an opportunity then to meet other officers down in the old southwest area, so that was, that part was very good.
Tom, do the webinar, do the webinar, Tom.
But thank you, we now have opportunity for citizens' comments on any issues.
Sam Castronovo, 26142, Feather Sound Drive, Punta Gorda. I just want to continue to feel that, voice my objection to the RO plant, and the opinion that you should be buying the water from Charlotte County, you're going to have to build that line anyways. I noticed that you included, you had your consultant adjust some of my comments, I don't necessarily agree with everything they said. They speak of a clay layer, that clay layer is infused with sand, so there is a possibility that the water, you know, you could have saltwater intrusion. They said it's been proven in other areas, but the geology is not the same every place. So, just to say that there isn't a problem someplace else doesn't necessarily apply here. And they said the water's hard. Let me tell you, obviously, these people do not live in Michigan. In Michigan, you know, even though the water goes through the treatment plant, they don't know what hard water is. Probably about at the end of a week, you would have calcium deposits on your, on your fixtures, I don't know if any of you are from, from, from Michigan, but like I say, this is not hard water. We are actually very pleased, my wife is pleased with the hard water, there isn't a lot of maintenance, you know, to your toilet bowls in Michigan, your toilet bowl will turn gray in a week if you aren't cleaning it every day, and the same thing with the sink, so. And I just did a little computation, and maybe the people should have a say in what this is all about. The, there are, if I found it correctly online, there are like 12,000 households in Punta Gorda, if you divide that into $28 million, that means each household is going to have to burden $2,300 to support this RO plant, the construction, forget about maintaining it down the road. The other thing is, I don't know if you've been reading the paper lately, but there have been a couple of articles concerning earth tremors, and what they found is that deep well injection into the rock strata is increasing the likelihood of earth tremors, to the point where I suggest you go back and take a look at the two articles in the Sun, one was on the 22nd of April, the other one was on the 24th, with deep well injection in Oklahoma, Oklahoma now has more earth tremors than California, and California is the most active geological zone in the United States. With regard to this sand mining, from a technical point of view, it looks to me like you're going to end the sand mining, because if you, if they have to maintain the exact conditions after they're done, as it was before, it's never going to happen, even by your demonstration.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other comments to come before council? Well, I want to thank you all for hanging out with us to the end.